To order. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers. Here in Cadillac. Allen Bass. Allen Bass.
President Cadillac.
Ingalls.
Here in Cadillac.
King.
Present and in Cadillac.
Mayor Falcons.
Here and in the city of Cadillac. This time if we could get a motion to approve the agenda.
I would make a motion to approve the agenda as amended to add a closed session to discuss a confidential written legal opinion pursuant to section 8H of the Open Meetings Act.
Councilmember Shippers supports. Councilmember Allen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. This time we'll open the floor for our first public comment. Seeing and hearing no one, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. This evening, we do have the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on February 15, 2021.
I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Allen Bass.
This is Ingalls. I'll support.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Allen Bass.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, this evening, we do have three public hearings that we'll need to step through. And so Marcus, I'll send it to you for the first one.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The first public hearing this evening is with respect to the consideration of an ordinance to approve the sale of real property. Mike, I'm going to try to share my screen. And if you could allow that, that'd be good. Or if you could.
No, without my permission, you're not.
Oh, I, I.
All right, you're good.
All right.
Says the man behind the screen.
So could you, can you guys see the graphic?
Yes.
Okay, super. So this evening, this has been before you a couple of times. It started off with the land swap, if you guys may recall, with consumers, where we swapped a portion of Lot 1 with consumers to gain control over Lot 2. And as previously reported to council, that was to accommodate the opportunity for Spencer Plastics to purchase a lot 2 in order for them to move forward with their building expansion project. And so this evening is essentially the final step involving the city council, which is the public hearing and the subsequent ordinance for your consideration that would sell Lot 2 to Spencer Plastics. It also, of course, finalizes our collaboration arrangement with the Cadillac Industrial Fund. 90% of the sale proceeds go to the city, 10% of the sale proceeds per ordinance goes to the industrial fund. The sale of Lot 2 is at $14,540. And if there's any further questions, I'm certainly happy to do my best in answering them. Otherwise, this would be an opportunity for the public to participate.
Okay, at this time, we'll open the floor for public comment as it relates to this public hearing. I'm not seeing or hearing anyone. Are you, Mike?
No, I don't see anybody who has raised their hand or indicated that they want to talk. Marcus, can you take that off the screen? I just want to make sure. It makes it a little difficult.
Yeah, I'll stop sharing.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm not seeing anybody who has raised their hand or indicated that they want to give any public comments.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment and move to any discussion or questions from the council.
This is councilmember Shippers. If there aren't any questions, I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance to approve sale of real property within the James E. Potvin Industrial Park.
Allen Bass would second that.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Allen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The second public hearing this evening is with respect to an ordinance that amends our zoning ordinance regarding uses permitted in our business districts. What makes this one frankly extra special is that the culmination of several years' worth of hard work and effort by Mike Coy and John Wallace of our Community Development Department in leading the city through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation's Redevelopment Ready Communities Certification process is basically going to be hopefully over. This is the last touch, at least at the moment that we're aware of, is going to be required before the MEDC's certification group is going to analyze our full submittal, which we anticipate happening at some point, hopefully yet this month in March, before learning whether or not they're going to award us with the certification. John Wallace will provide council with an overview. But in short, this allows for certain uses to occur by right within our business districts. And John, if you wouldn't mind jumping in and providing a little bit deeper dive in brief, that would be great.
Thank you, Marcus. I guess I would refer you to your council communication. That's probably the best document to give you an overview of what we're going to be looking at this evening. In your packet was the council communication, also a copy of the actual amendment that's being proposed, the resolution to adopt the ordinance amendment. And then there was a separate one-page description of why the language that was selected for change and the rationale behind those changes. I won't get into the weeds with that, but it's all there for your information to show exactly why we're doing what we're doing. And Marcus capsulized pretty succinctly why we're doing this with regard to the redevelopment-ready communities. But if you try to simplify what this change does, it essentially changes the zoning districts B1, B2, and B3. And what it does is allow residential dwelling units on the upper floors by right. We allow those units right now by special use permit. But to get to mixed use by right, which is what the MEDC would like, we needed to make these changes. Now, the B3 district is the only difference. We're allowing those on the first floor by right, but not within the DDA district. And the reason for that was that we simply need to try to have people-oriented businesses on the first floor in the core of downtown. So for B1 and B2, it would just simply apply to upper-level residential units, you know, above the first floor. B3 could be any of the floors, as long as it wasn't within the DDA district. So that's essentially what's on the table tonight. And the recommended action, of course, would be to approve the resolution to adopt the ordinance amending the city's zoning ordinance regarding uses permitted in the business districts. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And Mayor, members of the city council, just wanted to add one more piece to that, that there was some conversation of concern brought to my attention by council regarding the special use required permit for group shelters within these commercial districts. And council does have the ability, given how the public hearing was noticed at the planning commission level, should you wish to amend this, to remove that particular use that is available to you as well as you go through the process this evening. First, of course, which would be to open the floor to the public hearing.
At this time, we'll go ahead and open the floor for public comment as it relates to this public hearing. Again, this is a public comment for the public hearing in regards to the downtown district and the zoning ordinance. That's on the agenda for those who have just joined. Okay, seeing or hearing no one, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion or a motion.
This is councilmember King. I had noticed when we looked at it that both under section 374, sub-paragraph 3, and section 397, sub-paragraph 5, there was a mention of group shelters in this and hearken back to when we decided, and from input I've had from the business owners, that the downtown district would not be an area that we'd want group shelters in. Therefore, barring other discussion, I would make a motion that we amend these sections of the zoning ordinance, except exclude those paragraphs and uses that reference group shelters.
Second that.
Hold on a second. So this is, so we're talking about striking under the, you said, the section 46374, where it says, "Group Shelter" in the third, and then the next section, too, where it says, "Group Shelter as allowable special use permits," meaning they wouldn't be able, wouldn't even be able to go through the special use permit process, right?
That would be correct, yes.
Is there a reason why you do not want group shelters?
And I'm sorry, is this a member of council?
I'm sorry, no, this is a public speaker.
No, public comment is closed.
This is councilmember Shippers. I will ask that question. Can you explain your reasoning for that?
Yes, as we saw previously, when the council had considered a shelter overlay zoning in the downtown area, it was discussed that the businesses were already stressed with some of the problems downtown. And we have a really neat area and development going on now for New Hope Shelter for all three forms of shelter. And therefore, downtown in our businesses would not be an appropriate place to put these.
Okay, is there any more discussion? If not, Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Sorry, I just want to make sure that I understand. Because I thought that the motion was, was the motion to approve the ordinance as amended with those strikes, is that?
Yes.
That would be correct.
Okay, all right.
Don't, we don't vote on striking that or just the amendment? The whole thing is with striking the use of shelters downtown?
Yeah, the motion, as I understand it, would be to adopt the ordinance with the removal of group shelters under 46374 and 46397, as it's been forwarded to the council.
All right, Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers. I hate the idea of limiting shelters. I didn't like it when we did it before. But I believe that the amendment to have dwellings in the downtown area is a good one. So I will vote yes, I suppose. Allen Bass.
I will vote yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The final public hearing this evening is with respect to the adoption of an ordinance regarding the issuance of water supply system revenue bonds. Again, this has been before you previously. And just to reiterate what was introduced a couple of weeks ago, the bonds were approved by council, or the notice of intent to issue the bonds, I should say, were approved by council by resolution back in December of 2020. We're well beyond the 45-day right-of-referendum at this point in time. This is likely the very last step with respect to council's involvement in the process, subject to there being a future construction-related change order that goes outside of the scope of what we would be able to do otherwise administratively. And again, all costs incurred for the project design, engineering, and even the construction that may start are all reimbursable from these bond proceeds. And of course, this is with respect to the construction of the new well field off of 44 Road. Both Jeff Deetland, our Director of Utilities, and Owen Roberts, our Director of Finance, are certainly also at this meeting this evening, should you have any additional questions after the public hearing portion of the item. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and open the floor for public comment as it relates to this public hearing.
Regarding what, ma'am?
It was, the public hearing is in regards to the issuance of the water supply system revenue bonds?
I'm not familiar with those things, if you could educate me.
Marcus.
Sure, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council, and members of the public. Public hearing currently is open regarding the issuance of bonds to construct the new well field off of 44 Road. The process is legally required in order for the city to issue the debt for the construction, engineering, and all related activities for the project. And this is an opportunity for the general public to state their position on the project itself or the issuance of the debt.
Thank you, Marcus.
Yep, you're welcome.
Okay, thank you on that. I guess my question would be is.
Excuse me, before you continue, would you please state your name for the clerk?
Sure, my name is Jeremy Olson.
All right, and then I just want to remind everyone that in public comment, we are limited to a six-minute timeframe. Thank you.
Thank you. Based on what I'm understanding is, the current well that you guys, the city is currently using, correct? What is going on with that current well that is being used?
And Mr. Olson, I would also let you know that public comment is a time for you to express to the council your thoughts about this public hearing, and it's not an opportunity for discussion with you.
I understand that. I'm just trying to understand the situation. The well, I think it could be of good use if it's properly done.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd like to add what Jeff had told me at one of the meetings, we should be good for 15 years. I'm sorry.
Can you wait until we close public comment? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Not seeing or hearing anyone else, we'll go ahead and close public comment and move to the discussion amongst the council.
No?
Yes.
Oh, good. From our conversation last time with Mr. Deetland, this well should last this 50 years. So it's a wise investment, a no-brainer.
Can you also talk for a second, Jeff, about the closing down of the old well field and the industrial park and the repurposing of that land that we're moving towards? And then also, like, the philosophy behind the, you know, two separate well field locations?
Yeah, if the council wants me to talk on that, I can, a brief history. In 1960s, we had our, the old well field installed with six wells and supplied the city of Cadillac with water. There was, it was centered around the industry, in the industrial basin of Cadillac. Over years, there was some, around the well field, there was some contamination released, nothing that got to our wells. But it was such that when we, the wells wore out in the DQ, we wanted to put more wells down. The DQ did not think it was wise for us to put wells in the area where there was known contamination around our wells, because at some point, that could creep into our wells. So we had to find a new well field. We did one over on Crosby Road, effectively splitting our well field, the old well field, which we maintained some wells at, and the new well field on Crosby at that time, effectively splitting it, giving us some redundancy. At that point, we decided, when we totally abandoned the well field on the old well field on 8th Street, we would move the additional wells, the wells that we were finally abandoning on 8th Street, over to a different area to split that up, so we would never have the possibility of a contamination taking out our total well field. So we'd always have half at one spot or the other that was operational. When we're done with the move, everything will be removed from the 8th Street location. The well buildings, the wells, and that land will be, I guess at that point, the city will decide what it wants to do with that land. If it's put up for sale, if it's kept for the public, you know, that would be the council's decision at that point, what to do with that land. But it'll just be a big, open, 23-acre field at that point.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, if there's no more discussion, would someone like to make a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance regarding issuance of water supply system revenue bonds, junior lien, serious series 2021. Allen Bass.
Ingalls, I'll support.
Councilmember Allen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, that takes us past our public hearings this evening and moves us on to a couple of appointments or reappointments that we have.
This is being recommended to approve the reappointment of Barb Johns to the Board of Review for a two-year term to expire on March 2, 2023. This is councilmember Shippers. I think it should be noted that Ms. Johns has been on this board since 1998. So I want to thank her for her service and, at the same time, make a motion to approve the reappointment of Barb Johns to the Board of Review for a two-year term to expire on March 2, 2023.
I'll second that. Allen Bass.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yeah, I'd say the Board of Review is not always the most funnest thing to sit on, but Barb always makes it wonderful to be there. She's fun to be around. I'll vote yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Allen Bass.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Absolutely. Motion carries.
This is being recommended to approve the reappointment of Randy Norman to the Construction Board of Appeals for a two-year term to expire on March 2, 2023.
This is King. I'll make the motion to approve the reappointment of Randy Norman to the Construction Board of Appeals for a two-year term to expire March 2, 2023.
Shippers supports.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Allen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, that takes us to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. First item this evening is with respect to the request of an approval for an ADA ramp. This ramp is located behind 115 North Mitchell Street. That location is currently in the process of being remodeled to be turned into a recreational marijuana retail store by Fresh Coast Provisioning. And just for some background purposes, our marijuana ordinance limits access to that specific type of retail store to a rear entrance only. So entrance from Mitchell Street is not allowed. Therefore, that rear entrance had to be redesigned to be ADA accessible. And of course, there, like with anything, are some unique structural issues within the building that did not allow for adjusting grades internal to the building, which is why, in part, some of this ramp does encroach on our property. The process was rather layered, I suppose I'll say it that way. We required the city operation, Public Works Operations Manager and our engineer to review and approve the plan. We also required the Planning Commission to approve it. And lastly, city council to approve it. Somewhere in the middle, after approval by Planning Commission, Public Works and Engineering, the ramp was actually constructed, and I do apologize for that happening prior to having this before council for your formal consideration, which is the last step in this process. But we are recommending this evening that council do approve the encroachment into Elk Avenue for the ADA ramp for 115 North Mitchell, as designed and included. That was previously in the January 14, 2021 right-of-way construction permit that was applied for by the builder, which is ECEK Holdings LLC, and was also previously approved by Engineering on January 13, 2021. The reference to the Planning Commission was in reference to their special use permit for Fresh Coast Provisioning itself, and that was something that they did this past October of 2020. John Wallace, our Development Director, is still at this meeting if there's any more detailed questions about the project itself. Otherwise, again, the recommendation this evening would be to approve the encroachment.
Would someone like to make a motion? Or are there any questions?
This is councilmember Shippers. Pardon me. I'd like to make a motion to approve the encroachment into Elk Avenue for the ADA ramp for 115 North Mitchell Street, as designed and included in the January 14, 2021 right-of-way construction permit, applied for by ECEK Holdings LLC and approved by Engineering on January 13, 2021.
Allen Bass will second.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Allen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. The next item is a recommendation with respect to the acquisition of two police utility interceptor vehicles. Bids were received from a dealer in Owasso, that being Signature Ford at the lowest bid at sixty-nine thousand seven hundred thirty dollars. Funds will be available as a part of our fiscal year twenty-one budget in our general fund for this acquisition. We are about a solid year behind, which is why we're looking at replacing two of our frontline vehicles at this time.
How many years do we usually get out of these, Marcus?
I would need to refer that to our Finance Director, but I'm guessing we probably get about six years, the most.
Just carries. Thank you.
And all the vehicles are over, or I want to say flirting with being over a hundred thousand miles, and that's usually be, well beyond the useful life on the road, as a pursuit vehicle.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
So, and as a reminder for everyone, what happens to the vehicles that are being taken out of service?
We will do one of a couple of things with them. Either put them up for a public auction as a part of a service that we use, or we will reallocate them back into the fleet for non-police-related use. So as a, for instance, we've got, you know, nearly a twenty-year-old vehicle that we use as a general admin car. That car is likely close to being at the end of its useful life of service, if not beyond it. It's possible that one of these vehicles, pending its condition, could be re-appropriated to fulfill that role, sort of pending how much work we need to get, get into it to make sure it's still roadworthy to continue service. Just, just a couple of different options usually that we'll do with our, with our vehicles when they come off, especially in the public safety area, or arena, I should say.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
If there are no other questions, would someone like to make a motion?
I would make a motion to award the purchase of two new Ford Police Utility Interceptors to Signature Ford of Owasso, Michigan, in the amount of sixty-nine thousand seven hundred thirty dollars. Ellen Bass?
King, I'll support.
Councilmember Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The next item is a request with respect to an agreement for services for a certified income survey. As members of council may recall from conversation we had several months ago, the city needs to have this specific type of survey done by a certified organization in order to determine whether or not we can once again become eligible for federal grant dollars through the Community Development Block Grant Program. This survey will determine whether or not we can essentially have the community put back on the housing and urban development, low to moderate income list, which would then qualify us to having access to those federal grant dollars. We've recently received a proposal from Lake Superior State University, which coincidentally, we are working with them prior to the COVID-nineteen pandemic basically closing everything down. They are, by the way, an institution that is certified by the Michigan Economic Development Corporation to conduct this necessary survey. Other certified institutions in the state were contacted. However, we've been informed that either they were not currently conducting any in-person surveys, which this does require, or they had not yet responded back to the city, and timing is starting to become, to be, to be somewhat of the essence. The Lake Superior State University proposal that we actually have today is for fourteen thousand seven hundred thirty-one dollars. As council may or may not recall, back in December of twenty nineteen, we did amend our budget to include an appropriation of thirty thousand dollars, thinking, and this was before COVID-nineteen hit, or before we even knew what it was, thinking that that would be a inadequate or more than adequate placeholder to conduct this survey. So we're, we're happy that the proposal came in at the, at the amount that it did, and we are very much looking forward to getting, getting this moved forward. The recommended, the recommended action this evening, of course, would be to waive our bidding for this professional service, to utilize Lake Superior State University to conduct the certified income survey, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement that's in your packets with Lake Superior State to conduct the survey in an amount of fourteen thousand seven hundred thirty-one dollars. Subsequent action will be recommended this evening to reappropriate funds for this contract into the fiscal year twenty-one budget to cover the survey expenses and the, the related costs accordingly. And so as you'll, you'll see this evening, there's two actions. One would be a request to waive the bid to use Lake Superior State, and then the second request would be a motion to authorize me to execute the agreement that you have in your agenda packets.
Is there any discussion or questions?
Can we use this study for anything other than the CDBG grant? Will we be using it for other grants in the future, or is it just required for this one, or?
It's, it's specific to the, the Community Development Block Grant, Councilmember.
Will we be able to like rely on this survey if we apply for like a block grant like two or three years from now, or do you have to get another one? Does it have a window where this is good for X amount of time, or?
That's a great question. I don't know how often the state or feds reanalyze the list, but we would be required to follow that guidance. So it's possible that the study will find that we should be on the list because we were just barely off of it before. And then after significant new improvements are made, that we find ourselves off the list, and may or may not have the option of trying to, again, get recertified to be back on the list. That's something that's an unknown. But whatever that timing is, and I'm not certain if it's an analysis that happens every year by the government or not, but whatever that timing is, is certainly, that's something that's on their end, not on our end locally. They're the ones that, that need to reestablish the list.
Great question.
Yep.
This is King. I'll go ahead and make the motion to waive competitive bidding for the certified income survey.
Ellen Bass will second.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The final item under the Manager's Report this evening is just-
Marcus, we have to do the second motion.
I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement with Lake Superior State University to conduct the study for the amount of fourteen thousand seven hundred thirty-one dollars. Ellen Bass?
This is King. I'll support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
I was just excited to talk about COVID-nineteen.
I was, I was getting ahead of myself. My apologies, my apologies. But thank you. I just wanted to remind the, the public certainly that there's a lot of great information out there. Things still seem to be changing and getting updated, frankly, on a weekly, if not daily basis. And for people that live in the city of Cadillac and within Wexford County and that Ten County area, the place that you have to go to is the District Ten Health Site, dhdten.org is their website. I don't have any further information regarding the pandemic to share this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a resolution this evening that needs to be adopted?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The resolution this evening is with respect to a request to amend the General Appropriations Act for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, as we spoke a little bit earlier this evening, specifically your last item, that this would be forthcoming. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to our Finance Director, Owen Roberts, to walk you through the consideration.
Okay, thank you. Just three brief items tonight, two that we've talked about already on this agenda. The first item, I just wanted to recognize the fact that when we had amended the budget earlier in the fiscal year, we talked about the grant dollars that had received through the, the CARES Act funding, and one of those programs, we said at the time, they had issued a payment for fifty percent of the amount while they did some further analysis because they were basically over-applied for on the total amount of funds that the city had for the program. The, the state has released the projected total disbursement related to that grant. We had gotten about two hundred and fourteen thousand, and the total projection is supposed to be about two hundred and seven, two hundred and eighty-five thousand to the city. So that's an additional seventy-one thousand dollars in funds. So that's, that's really good news, again, that will help provide stability for the year for the general fund. And so as such, then, the second item, we had planned to purchase a, an interceptor this year, and there was one in the prior approved capital improvement program for next year. And so it's being proposed right now to just order them both now and amend that into this year's budget, and we can do that through the use of these funds, and that'll get us to the point where we, we can replace both of these cars, including the equipment that we have to install on them related to the lights and, and the safety equipment. So that's what the, the general fund amendment does. If you look at the general fund summary there, each time we've come for an amendment, that's gotten a little bit less into the red, and if you recall, that's only in the red because we re-appropriated funds from the fire truck purchase that we were supposed to use reserves from last year. We had amended the final, about two hundred thousand dollars in payments into this year. So even with that, we're, we're just barely budgeted for a small use of, of funds at this point, and, and I would even anticipate that we won't, we won't use any of those. So we're shaping up to be in good, again, good results for the year with what we've, what we've brought in. The final item is the, the budget for the appropriation for the, the income survey that we just talked about. Again, wanted to point out that we had originally budgeted thirty thousand for this study in this, in this very same line item. Right now, we've reduced that to twenty, and we don't anticipate even spending all of that. The only costs in addition to the actual contract for the survey right now is we'll have some, some postage and some mailing expenses. So we wanted to provide a little bit of flexibility for some of those, but we don't anticipate spending all the way up to the twenty either. So that's the, the items for the budget amendment tonight.
Okay, someone like to entertain a motion, or is there any discussion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution amending General Appropriations Act for fiscal year twenty twenty-one.
Shippers supports.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, at this time, we'll open the floor for our final public comment this evening. If anyone would like to speak, we do ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, and please state your name.
I'm not seeing any hands raised, Mayor.
All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment. This evening, we do have to go into closed session. And so we'll need a motion to be able to get us there.
I'd make a motion to adjourn to closed session to discuss a confidential written legal opinion pursuant to Section eight H of the Open Meetings Act, and to invite Adam Ajupka, our Public Safety Director, to attend. Ellen Bass?
Do, did we, was there anybody who had good of the order before we go into closed session, I wonder?
Nope.
Yes, I got ahead of myself, and does anyone have anything for good of the order before we go into closed session? All right, not hearing anyone, then Councilmember Ellen Bass has a motion on the table.
This is Shippers.
Councilmember Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries.
All right, hang on one second.
Session, please.
Councilmember Shippers will make a motion to return to open session.
King, support.
Okay, hang on one second. I just want to make sure. All right, we're good.
Sandy's on mute.
I'm sorry, it took me a while to get back. I could, I didn't get the motion and support.
Shippers moved, King supported.
Thank you. Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
You're on mute.
Yes, thank you.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries. And with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you all very much.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, good night.
They say.